Meeting to order?
No pledge allegiance. We'll call this to order. I think we should give a good thanks to Mayor Hanson and Stephanie Owen for coming up with a structured budget for us to go through. I know they spent a lot of time with the department heads and they did, it looks like they've done a real good job. And Stephanie's gonna do a little overview on the budget, so we'll just turn it over to her and she's got a bunch of slides. She's gonna show us on what the budget is gonna look like.
Sure. And then I'm just gonna note for anyone who's watching today, we will upload the presentation as well as these overview documents to the agenda. I'll either do it tonight before I leave depending on when we get done or right away in the morning. So anyone who's watching along can pull up that information and look. So we'll come back and talk about the schedule, but one of the things I'm gonna need from council tonight is direction on, I have a number of dates up there. I don't know if we're gonna need all those. It is kinda unique this year because we do have two meetings in September after our next regular meeting. So if you'd rather just do those two meetings versus before a council meeting next week, we can talk about that as well. Oh, Susan is here. I was wrong. Sorry, Susan. Okay. This is just an update on kinda where we are so far this year. We have eight hundred and four thousand dollars in our contingency. As of right now, we've committed seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, four forty-three. So we have about, sorry, I'm gonna be struggling with these glasses today. We have about ten thousand remaining in that contingency account. I point this out just because next year in the budget, I did keep the contingency at the same level. We are starting to see a lot of repairs coming up annually that need to be done. I just wanted to make sure you could see those categories. We had some retirement employee changes. We have some authorizations that happened after budget. We have some cash transfers and then items that came in over budget was that fourth category. And then the last one, well, I suppose, I don't know if you guys are seeing my mouse. The last one is repairs. As far as sales tax collections so far in 2025, now this is when we actually receive sales tax. It's not the same as reported sales that the state does. This is when the city receives it. Actually, this is the one where, when the city receives it, excuse me. So you can see year-to-date, we're at ten million, three twenty-seven, eight eighteen. Our budget for 2025 is thirteen point four million. In 2024, we collected fifteen point three million. So we are currently about four point one percent above our collections from last year. I like to show this just because it's a comparison to how we're doing month over month in comparison to other cities. Oh, that's, sorry about that. And this is actually the reported sales, not when the city receives it. So these are sales reported to the state. I'm happy that four months out of 2025, we've been above the averages of the other first-class municipalities when you take out Sioux Falls and Rapid City. It's just always important to note with both of these, any sales tax collection is gonna be driven by inflation because if the cost of the item you're buying goes up, so will the sales tax collected. In 2025, our budget is one point nine million dollars below the 2024 collections. And that was done so intentionally. Our conversations at council level have been that we knew we had an upcoming debt service payment at the lake. And so we intentionally kept that revenue low so that we could cover the debt service payment out of that amount. I bring that up to you because that, since we're still four point one percent above last year's collection, we are gonna end sales tax revenue above budget in 2025. So if there's projects that you're looking at that were currently not in the budget that you're looking at adding, you know, that's potentially a source to fund those. Or you could also earmark that in your future capital project funds that you have in reserve now. Entertainment tax continues to be above 2024. You can see that. So I did bring up the budget this year a little bit, and in 2026, it's shown even a little bit higher. When we get into the 2026, you know what? I forgot to start my timer. I'm gonna do this so that I don't talk too long today. So when we get into the 2026 proposed budget, these are the categories we're gonna go over. Just the revenue expenditures, cash balances, we have capital items. ESPN is gonna go over one of those major capital items. We kind of have a need direction for final design on one of those. And then I'll need council to give direction on future meetings and what you wanna see next. So first, if you're just looking at our proposed general fund revenue budget, I don't have the overall revenue budget, but I will state this. Our total revenue proposed for 2026 is eighty million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is about one point six million dollars below the total revenue budget last year. For general fund, and general fund is really the, the fund where the most of general government services comes out of. It can really be kind of, it can be categorized into five different types of revenue. We have taxes, license and permits, miscellaneous, intergovernmental revenue, and charges for goods and services. If you look at that red part of the graph on the left, you can see that the majority of our revenue comes from taxes or eighty-eight percent of our total revenue. And there you can see the change, general fund revenue, excuse me. On the right, you can see the change in the general fund revenue from twenty-four to twenty-five. It went from twenty-four million to thirty-one million. The majority of that increase is due to adding, we added, I added one point nine million dollars into sales tax to bring us up to 2024 levels. Property tax is increasing to a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And then we have four point four million dollars of bond proceeds to finance the stormwater projects that you saw on the Capitol list. This is always a topic we talk about every year. So of that total tax revenue in the general fund, it's important to point out that sales tax is sixty-eight percent of that tax revenue that we receive. Property tax is thirty-one percent, and then we have a small category for franchise fees. Like I said, taxes are eighty-eight percent of the total revenue that we receive in the general fund. And you can see out of that amount, sales tax is sixty-eight percent of the tax revenue. This shows the changes in our special revenue fund budgets. And again, special revenue funds are funds that generate revenue for the services that they provide, but they also still receive support from general fund. So our special revenue funds include airport, business improvement districts, community services, E-nine-one-one, entertainment tax, Lake Mitchell Nutrition, and the Park Fund. You'll look at, Lake Mitchell had a huge decrease. That's because we showed SRF loan being received in 2025. Obviously, we haven't received that, but we're not going to budget the expense again. We would just move that to next year. And you'll see a very large increase in the airport fund. And that's because we're planning on receiving a grant for ten point eight million dollars to reconstruct the runway at the airport. John?
If we have a question as you go through this, do you want us to interrupt or?
Sure. Whatever way you would prefer is fine with me.
On that page that you're looking at?
Yep.
I was curious how nutrition, it will increase by a million, too.
That's wrong. That's a typo, so I'll have to look at that. That's incorrect, so thank you for pointing it out. Their, their revenue was very close to previous years. So yeah, that's wrong. I thought I caught them all. Good catch, John. Enterprise fund revenue budgets, you can see here, the major decrease from water is the projects this year aren't relying. We don't have as many projects and last year we had more SRF money coming into the revenue budget. And then you can see there, we have a little bit more for sewer. We do have, the city has six designated enterprise operations. John?
Well, I have a question on this page.
Yep.
Just that, you show the golf course increasing by eighteen, twenty percent. Are they finding that it's increasing boots or green things?
No, this is. Yep.
But that's kind of an increase.
It's just an increase in budgeted revenue. The golf course has been under-budgeting what they actually collect in revenue. So it's not a comparison of what they actually receive, just budget numbers. Yep, that one I got right, so that's good. Again, the city has six different designated enterprise funds. These funds operate more like a business where the revenue raised is used to fund the operations. However, they still might receive general fund, nope, not enterprise funds, not anymore. Corn Palace has at times received general fund support and so has the golf course. I wanna point out, just because we do get this question a lot, water and sewer and sanitation, our utility accounts do not receive general fund support. And we also don't take revenue from those three funds to give money to general fund. That question comes up quite a bit. This slide here shows all of the total general fund, or excuse me, all of the total expenditure budgets for the city. The total expenditure budgets for 2026 are proposed at eighty-two million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. So just like revenue budgets, expenditure budgets are also divided into funds based on how we're accounting for the operations in each of those areas. The total proposed expenditures is a decrease of two point five million dollars from the 2025 approved levels. Again, that's mostly just a changeover in those major capital projects. This here is the general fund budget. And just, I am working on a little bit different presentation for public purposes, especially when we get to the approval of the annual budget. I'm trying to make it grouped into maybe easier headings so the public can just follow along what each of those services are a little bit easier. So here we've got these divided into six broader categories. General government and everything you see under general government there are services that provide, or it's departments that provide services across all city departments. So all city, you know, we do things for everyone in the city, not just specifically one department. Then we've got police, fire.
So like finance and you.
Yep, finance does the accounting for all of city funds. It doesn't matter which account or which fund you're in. IT is for everyone in the city. I provide services to everybody. HR, insurance and bonds is our property and work comp insurance. So all of those are kind of citywide functions are now, I show grouped under general government. When you look at the chart this way, you can see that the majority of our expenditures for general fund fall into public works. And then the next biggest one is in other uses. And those other uses are gonna be what we transfer out to other funds. So that might be going to support the lake or to support park and rec, our debt service payments, contingency, and subsidy applications. Yep.
I see on the mayor, like in the mayor's office, we're talking to six, it's three times what it has been.
Yep.
What, is there some special thing going?
Yep, I can go through that right here. I actually have a note on that, I'm sure, so.
Can I interject quick?
Yep.
I'm running the screen and mics tonight. I just got a response asking for people to use their mics.
Oh, yes. Hey, I didn't have to do that for once. That's kinda nice. Okay, so in the general fund or general fund, general government budgets, we have elections, administrative boards, city council. You can see the list here. Administrative boards is really our special events coordinator that's working with our bid boards and SEA and those types of functions, presurgents party, and also helps with the corn palace a little bit. Notes on these budgets, we have twelve full-time employees and nine elected officials. In the IT budget, we include a hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred for, we're replacing our battery backups and the servers that serve all of the city. The other thing that's new that's in there that I just wanted to point out is we have thirty thousand dollars budgeted for a seat click fix program is what it's called. It would be tied to our website where people in the public through their phone could submit a report of something that they see that they want, whether it's a pothole or it's something that's wrong in a park. We really said it's gonna make Mayor Hanson's job a lot easier because everybody can submit those concerns and, and we have a way to track it internally and make sure that we're distributing it to the right department to get addressed. Finance budget, if you see an increase in there, it's really due to, we had to add some additional professional services for auditing and continuing disclosures. The mayor's budget included, and this has been changed now, oh, I have it in here. Mayor's budget included fifty thousand dollars for retail strategies, fifty thousand dollars for Dakota Institute to update the economic study that was done several years ago in Mitchell, and ten thousand dollars for student council projects. That would be the change, John. Here we've got both the cemetery shown with their change. It's increased ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars from 2025. That is one percent of the total general fund budget. There's two point three full-time employees here. We have one employee that's split with golf. Their main cost increases is due to tuck pointing that they're gonna be doing on the entrance pillars into the cemetery, cracked ceiling, fogged ceiling, cemetery roads. And then they have about eighty-one thousand dollars of equipment purchases. When you look at library, it's really a decrease because we took out, I mean, they did a sign replacement and other projects that are not included in 2026, and it includes seven full-time employees. Police, you can barely see animal control on the left. It really hasn't increased other than just some utility costs going up. Budgets in this category are providing law enforcement within the city of Mitchell. And it's the, it reflects thirteen percent of the total general fund budget. We have thirty-one full-time employees that work in these budgets. Twenty-eight of those thirty-one employees are sworn officers. And we don't really have it, we don't have any projected changes for employment levels. We did recently add two additional staff and now I'm thinking that was twenty-five, but it might have been twenty-four. Twenty-five? Twenty-four? Twenty-four, okay. We do have some facility improvements in the police department, including replacing a range roof for ninety-five hundred dollars. We have replacing four AC units, equipment upgrades. And we have two new marked police vehicles and then one unmarked police vehicle included in this budget. They're also doing new computers, docks, and printers for each of the patrol cars as well. General fund, fire department. So the fire department budget for twenty-six is proposed at four point six million dollars, an increase of about two point five. This reflects thirteen percent of the total general fund budget. The increase is because we are proposing to start that second fire station. This is something that came up with council, geez, it's been talked about for the last couple of years. Council is wanting us to move forward with this. We've been working with Design Art Group. They've been really great and donated some services to get to a schematic design. So that estimated two point five is for construction and design of the second fire station. That station would be located on where you see the red shaded area, which is where our current wastewater, well, not wastewater, our former water treatment plant is on North Main. The fire department really thought that that lent itself, they liked being right on the highway so they could have easy access on and off. We'll talk about this more in the Capitol projects too, and I have a picture too. But I just wanna make sure I pointed out that's what the difference in the, in the budget was from. They also have several other equipment and facility improvements, things like we have some water valves in the fire bay that are leaking. We're replacing some protective equipment for forty-two thousand, four twenty-five. And we have the second payment on the new fire engine for three hundred and one thousand dollars. And then, like I said, the design and construction costs of the second fire station. We're showing this, the whole cost, but what we talked about for an estimated timeline is finishing design in twenty-six, going to bid in the fall, and the construction would likely take place over two years with completion in 2027. Again, this would allow faster response times. It's gonna help with that ISO ratings for the north half of town. And it's proposed to be funded out of the future capital projects fund.
And Stephanie, the two point five is all in, that's design, construction, ready to go.
Yes, that's the estimate we were given. Again, a big thanks to Design Art for doing that work for us at no cost to the city of Mitchell, so that was really great. The next category would be public works, and you can see the, the different departmental budgets in this category. It totals eleven million, three ninety-six, three thirty. It is thirty-three percent of the total general, general fund budget. So this is where we're gonna do the majority of our infrastructure work that we pay for out of general fund, storm drainage, streets and sidewalks, street department. This is where we do our cracked ceiling, our overlay projects, our sidewalks, everything like that. This budget, these budgets include twenty-four full-time employees. We have one point, almost one point, actually, almost two million dollars in street overlay projects planned. We have four hundred and thirty-five thousand for cracked ceiling and chip ceiling, three hundred and sixty thousand for equipment purchases, including a UTV, another crosswalk, push button, the battery backup. We have a tack truck. Sidewalk improvements at two hundred and twenty-four thousand and two parking lot improvement projects for one thirty-two, five hundred. I have them in the Capitol projects, but it's the ICE Arena Parking Lot and the parking lot that's over by Hitchcock Park on First Avenue where we just are clearing out where the mobile home park was. So, and I, I think I have an image of that later on too. And other uses, again, other use, this is, transfers out to other funds. You can see the categories here. The total is ten million, fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and represents twenty-nine percent of the total budget. You can see there that transfers out actually went down because you transferred some cash out of general fund into the lake fund last year. Or we budgeted to do that. It was four point six million dollars. So it looks like it's going down, but actually our transfers out to park has went up. Whoops. And here you can see it broke out, the transfers out broken out. So that's where I was saying, if you look here, one point two million dollars is what, oh yeah, you guys can't see what I'm pointing at, sorry. Our transfers out to park is going up by one point two million. The lake condo is going down, the airport's going up. This increase right here is really to cover the cost of the matching funds for the runway construction project. That's a eleven million dollar project that the city ends up spending three hundred thousand dollars on. So a really good deal for us, but, and there is not general fund transfer that proposed for 2026 for the corn palace, and the rest are flat or decreasing. The proposed transfer to lake that you see here, that's really to cover the first debt service payment for the lake project and then the existing debt service project for, or debt service payment for the wetland purchase, the property purchase. So that's what that's for. Obviously, we know that we're not gonna have debt service in 2026, but we wanna be able to show in the budget presentation that the revenue is there is to support the debt service payment. So these look hard to read, but I do have a better print of this later. So here you can see the general fund subsidies. We received fourteen subsidy requests that total six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two seventy-seven. That would have been an increase of fifty-one percent. At this point, the proposed budget includes Mayor Hanson is proposing a reduction of thirty percent from the 2025 budgets for all subsidies except for the municipal ban and the exchange fireworks. We also received new applications from the Salvation Army, Cornerstone Career Learning Center, Enforcement Sports Incorporated. No new subsidies were included in the 2026 proposed budget. So the total proposed subsidy budget is two hundred and seventy-three thousand. So the total proposed subsidy budget is two hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Which is a total decrease of thirty-five percent from the twenty-twenty-five improved level. Okay, special revenue funds. Like I said before, these ones might receive support from the general fund, but they do generate revenue on their own as well. Bid taxes, you're gonna see. The business improvement districts, they're the bid tax that we talked about. Those are two separate ones. We have one that's set up for the hotels. And one that's set up for Main Street. Both of them have a business improvement district board. And those boards determine how those funds are spent. So they, we've asked them to consider the budget. And I think actually the bid board will be finalizing theirs at their next meeting. The first one is Main Street Business Improvement District. Um, now that Main Street has completed the streetscape. They are requesting seventy-four thousand three ninety-two for their grant programs that they do. And then they're gonna be doing ten thousand dollars for board projects. The hotel bid district does thirty thousand dollars for board. Projects and then a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they give to the Sports and Events Authority. To issue grants to events coming to town. Talked about that. The E-nine-one-one budget includes twelve full-time employees and that's really for the operations of our. Public Safety Answering Point, our dispatch center. The city does. Dispatch for a regional area and we contract with other counties for that service. We do support the operation of that service, but um, we also get funds from the fees that you, you pay on your cell phones. As well. John, there you go. There's, actually the nutrition budget should be four hundred and eight thousand six fifty-one. Because they do have a balanced budget, so that number earlier was incorrect. So you can see here Palace Transit and James Valley in the Community Services Fund. They include eleven full-time employees for departmental operations. Palace Transit budget includes the city funding approximately twenty percent of most of the costs. We have a new bus in there for sixty-five thousand three eighty-five. That's a hundred percent of our cost. But if we were to buy the whole project, it would cost a lot more because there are grant funds that cover two hundred and sixty-one thousand five forty. So the total bus is over three hundred thousand, but the city only pays sixty-five thousand for that. Both of these services, James Valley Community Services and Palace Transit are heavily relied, reliant on general fund dollars. They do not self-support, so we, it's a general fund transfer to make that happen. But Jessica does an incredible job seeking grants for everything that she can to cover anything she can in operations, which is really great. And she was able to get the state, I don't remember if it was a state or federal grant for that bus, but she was able to get them to hold off. So we could do it next year, so we could budget for those funds and make that happen. So we're really happy about that too.
And is a lot of that, or is, is Palace Transit for sure, is that, is any of that, a percentage of that? Offset by the fees people pay? Is that reflected somewhere?
Yep, that would have been in their revenue. Um, we transfer about, I think it's, oh boy. I'll tell ya. I can show you. We've got it right here.
We are required, wow, that's loud. We are required to do a fifteen percent Fairbox match for our grant specifications.
Okay, so she has ninety-two thousand dollars coming from general fund and we're applying, I think, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of reserve. So that difference is not covered by grants or by charges that they do, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I skipped over nutrition. So the nutrition fund budget is also part of the Community Services Department. And that's what funds our adult nutrition program, the Community Services operates. So Jessica's been, this includes one, the um, salaries for one full-time employee. Jessica's been through the wringer in the last couple of months trying to ensure that we get to keep the revenue as proposed. And recently got notification that it looks like our grant funds are still safe for next year, which is really good. Airport, again, the major difference here is that in, the airport fund is used for the costs associated with operating the airport. We have two full-time employees that are budgeted. That's different. Before, we only had one. We're proposing adding one more employee. We would do that after the winter season. Um, it, as you know, we have a snow removal contract with an outside vendor. We're proposing that we would, after the twenty-five to twenty-six snow removal, we would eliminate that contract. We would add another full-time employee. This employee would be split between the airport, street and traffic. Kind of floating between the three different departments. And then we wouldn't have to do the snow removal contract. We'd have city crews do that. We think that that's gonna be a better use of funding. And especially when we're paying eighty thousand dollars in a year where we might not have any snow, that employee could be used to do other projects.
Any additional equipment required for that?
And that's in the budget as well. We have a loader and a. UTV, hi, thank you.
That contract was very difficult, wasn't it, Jill? Cause there's so many stipulations that they have to live so, so close and have to have it completed by a certain time. And we were very lucky for as long as we did to have that, but makes sense.
And truly, the other thing it does is it gives us another backup person for the airport. So you don't have one person who's solely responsible for the operations. They'll be able to fill in too. And the cross-departmental use of the position is gonna be great too, for when we have big projects going on. Okay, now we're on Entertainment Tax Fund, another special revenue fund. This comes from the one percent of sales tax added to ticket sales, hotels, um, alcohol and food sales. South Dakota Codify Law says that the tax can be used for land acquisition, architectural fees, construction costs, payments for civic center auditorium. And athletic facility buildings, including the maintenance staffing and operations. The reason why I read that is because we do use a significant portion of this fund for the operation of the Corn Palace. And we show that actually going up in twenty-twenty-six. There's an additional hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars out of entertainment tax going to the, going to the Corn Palace Fund. Without that, we would have to do a general fund transfer. So we're proposing to shift that burden over to entertainment tax. It's an allowable use of those funds. The community, the Convention and Visitors Bureau receives a subsidy from entertainment tax to market the Mitchell community. That's also an allowable use of entertainment tax fund. The subsidy was reduced thirty percent in line with the other general fund subsidy reduction. And then we have seven hundred and fifty, in the twenty-twenty-five budget, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for the Corn Palace Plaza Expansion. Council heard a presentation on that. The dollar figure came in at, I believe, right at one point two million dollars. Council said that was too much and didn't wanna move forward with it. I am putting seven fifty back in here so that you can have the discussion about whether or not you wanna do something there. And at what level and move forward or not. Okay, next special revenue fund is the Park Fund. So there's a number of different budgets in the Park Fund. We've got Recreation and Aquatics that really runs our programming and our outdoor pool. We've got the Rec Center Sports Complex, which is basically everything over by the Ice Arena. The soccer fields, the softball fields, baseball field. And then we've got Parks, which is really the operation of our parks. And supervision is just uh, some general costs go in there, like. They pay for the insurance for all the parks facilities out of there and then obviously the staffing. In the Park Fund, we have nineteen full and, full-time employees that are budgeted in this fund to support the departmental services. Some of the projects in here include, we have slide restoration, sun, excuse me, sun shade replacements. We have a handicap lift replacement in the pool. The Rec Center uh, budget has a hundred and thirty, go ahead.
What's the myriatic acid tank that you didn't mention?
Can we talk about it in the capital projects? That'd be great, cause this is really just the overview part, so I've got a little more detail, yeah. We've got a hundred and thirty-one thousand in the Rec Center to include refinishing the gym floor, sand filters. The rec pool heater, we have two HVAC units. We've been trying to replace two a year. We had two budgeted this year and we had two fail this year, is that right, Kevin? So we're doing those out of contingency, so we need to keep on those replacements. Um, and then some new equipment. The sports complex budget includes. That's wrong. I wrote the wrong note here. One point two mil- one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the Ice Arena roof. And then they've got LED rink lighting and we had, if you remember this year, we budgeted to do an inspection on all of our light poles. In lieu of just replacing them all with LEDs. We had to replace some this year that were immediate. You had to replace or coming out of contingency. But now we have five more that they said we need to replace next year in the budget. So it includes replacing those five that are on the replace now list. We've got the press box on the Field of Dreams. The Parks Budget includes adding an AC and furnace at day camp. I think the, and the siding, doors and windows at Patton Young. Park, that has been cut from the budget the last three years. So we were trying to make it a priority to get that in. We have a, the playground being replaced would be Genuine Park.
Where's that?
Yeah.
Over by the college.
What?
Was this another question?
Oh, I was just trying to hear what you're saying, sorry. It includes Hitchcock Park roadway and lighting around the pool. We do have a, a railroad trail project in there, but that is dependent on the grant. If we don't get the grant, we wouldn't be able to do the project. Enterprise Fund budgets, you can see here, we have enterprise, our enterprise fund budgets provide utility services. Water and sewer basically, garbage services, ambulance services. And our entertainment services, which is Corn Palace, golf course and our campground. So our u- utility services um, do not receive funding from the general fund. And we also do not take any revenue from utility accounts to support the general fund. Here you can see the changes in those fund budgets from twenty-five to twenty-six. So campground is going down. We had a project planned this year for the storm shelter. You can see the golf course change. Corn Palace EMS is up because we have um, some equipment purchases in that budget. And then a little less in our water and sewer projects next year. We've been doing quite a bit the last couple of years, so a little less of those projects next year. Again, the campground is for, it's sp- it's a self-supporting uh, fund for the operation of the, of the campground at Lake Mitchell. We are not transferring general fund money into this account. There was an item that was cut from the budget that they requested an out front mower. They did not have the cash available or the revenue to support it. So to do that project, we would have had to transfer general fund money over. However, if they end the year okay this year and they think they have cash available, they could ask for that during the supplemental process. Oh, here's my notes, there we go. Uh, Corn Palace is for the operations of the Corn Palace. Again, it's supported from the Entertainment Tax Fund. There's six full-time employees in this departmental budget and it includes uh, us. Paying for someone to contract to decorate the corn on the Corn Palace like we are this year. So we added seventy-five thousand dollars again to hang the corn on the outside of the building. There's seventy-three thousand dollars of other facility upgrades. They have the front restroom being remodeled. Farm facts, display pieces being added, chaser lights and concession equipment.
Excuse me, Stephanie, um, on the Corn Palace Fund, last year, we had a discussion of kind of. Watching to see what the operation of the Corn Palace itself is like the event center to kinda keep that separate. Were we able to do any of that or can we do that next year?
I'm, it's gonna have to be a start fresh January one using Project Accountant. I, it just hasn't been done consistently enough that I could say for certain that we've got everything.
Yeah, it's just good to know because we haven't, that is our event center, but then it's also a tourist attraction. So it would be nice to know what, what are we making or losing in, in the actual event center itself. Thank you.
EMS Fund, uh, that is for the operation of our now regional ambulance service. Does rece- receive general fund support. The city gives about eight hundred thousand dollars out of general fund to support the operations. There are nineteen full-time employees, which is an increase of six full-time employees. Those six new full-time firefighters slash paramedics are being funded from the new ambulance district. That allows us to add two more staff per shift, enough to run one more ambulance per shift. Let's see here, yep, and we get eight hundred thousand dollars of support annually from the general fund that has not decreased for twenty-twenty-six. We just have the additional revenue coming from the ambulance district that will pay for those six new employees. Sanitation Fund is for landfill services at the city of Mitchell. It includes four departmental budgets. We've got recycling, collection, landfill, debt service. Again, the sanitation fund does not receive general fund support. So here you can see the changes from twenty-five to twenty-six. Everything is really a decrease due to projects being completed in twenty-twenty-five. There are four full-time employees that are funded out of these department, departmental budgets. One point to make, uh, we do have seventy-eight thousand dollars in this budget to be used for alley maintenance. There is part of our collector, our fee at the landfill that is dedicated for alley maintenance. So right now it's proposed that there would be two alleys and I think we're gonna do those as an assessment project. Is that correct? I think seventy thousand was for two alleys, including them to be assessed for half the cost.
Correct.
Yep, okay, that's pretty. We do currently have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that has been collected from that alley maintenance fee that can be used towards other projects. Yep, I had it right there. We also included three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, which is the second of the ten payments to Jim River Ridge Farms for the future landfill expansion. To the. I think that's to the west of the current property. The individual budget decreases are largely just due to capital projects in twenty-five that are not being done in twenty-six. And again, this fund also does not receive any money from general fund. Water Fund, uh, is part of the utility services provided by the city. It's really divided into three different categories. You've got treatment, distribution and debt service. And as you can see. Our distribution is the majority of the cost at four point two million dollars. Our debt service is starting to get up there with the projects that we have taken on through SRF financing. Here's the changes from last year and you'll see that that distribution budget is really going down from twenty-five to twenty-six. Taking those projects out that were budgeted in twenty-twenty-five. We have five point five full-time employees in this budget. The water treatment budget that you see includes our payments that we make to BY for water distribution, water distributed by the city of Mitchell. It also includes our repairs that we need to do for any of those service lines. And then distribution, like I said, is where the majority of our projects happen. We do have two million dollars in there next year for uh, the water. Portion of the North Omen Project and the Thirteenth Avenue Project and the lift station project. Again, it doesn't receive any funding from general fund and is supported by user fees. Here's our wastewater fund and it's also divided into four different categories. You can see those there. The majority of ours that, you see here is collection, that's really our operational cost. You'll see debt service is also a little bit higher with those projects that we have coming in that were budgeted in twenty-five, twenty-six. You can see the collection budget went down significantly. And debt service is starting to go up with some of those debt service payments coming on. We have six point five million, or, boy. Six point five full-time employees, wow. Let's see here, what else have I been, I mentioned? We have one point two million dollars of projects in the collection budget that we anticipate would be funded. Out of an SRF loan. That includes the North Omen Project and Fourteenth Project. And then they will be self-funding the Thirteenth Avenue Project. Again, this one doesn't get any support from general fund and is supported by user fees. Okay, now we're on to the proposed budget. These funds would show cash being added to reserves. Because the revenue coming in is higher than the expenditures requested in the budget. Man, I thought I had the cash applied in here. I guess I don't.
We have.
We have.
That's great. I left it off my sheet. Thank you. Okay, the twenty-twenty-six budget als- also shows cash applied from reserves for several budgets. Uh, the bid three fund is spending twenty thousand dollars towards those grant projects that they're gonna give out. Nutrition fund is spending a hundred and two thousand dollars from reserves for operations and that's just because they have a high reserve balance. So. I don't believe that the city should transfer general fund money over just to add to that balance. Uh, golf course fund is spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from reserve, which includes seventy-five thousand to repay. Uh, the interfund loan that the general fund did to the golf course and then also fifty thousand dollars towards a shared expense with cemetery for a payloader. The EMS fund is spending two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from reserves towards operations. Entertainment tax fund is shown as spending three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from reserve. Which includes a hundred and ten of that is dedicated reserves for corn palace expansion. We got some. Um, from the sale of the Casey lot and then the rest of it came from the Northwestern building transferred. Or Bradley's building now. General fund shows cash applied from future capital projects, which is two point five million dollars for the second fire station. And one point two five million to replace the ice arena roof. Following those transfers, this would be your dedicated reserve balances. So even after transferring. The two point five for the fire station, the one point two five for the ice arena roof. Council would still have the two million dollars in that future capital projects in our reserve fund that's not being touched. I do think you would also, I said this at the beginning, our, our sales tax revenue is gonna be above budget. So you would also have the ability to probably add about between one point seven to one point nine. To this fund for future projects as well at the end of twenty-twenty-five. This just shows the employee changes. Again, it took a huge jump in twenty-twenty-six because we're adding. One employee that split between public works departments and then six full-time firefighters. Okay, so now we're into capital projects. So this is showing the capital projects as broke out by fund. So you can see where they're tied to. Of course, the majority of ours are in the airport fund and that's really for the runway project. This is if you'd like to see the capital projects by type. So the majority of the capital projects are shown in infrastructure. Um, that has been true for at least the last. Five, six years as we've been doing water and sewer and uh roadway projects. Sorry. Okay, this sheet shows our major projects that are proposed over three hundred thousand dollars. So again, you've got the airway, or airway, airport runway project. Again, we're only spending three hundred thousand on that. The rest is funded through a grant. We've got North Omen, uh, construction of the second fire station, thirteenth avenue lift station. We have a couple of different drainage projects. This one specifically, where is it? Oh, Anderson and Williams. Okay, that is specifically only drainage. This is a combined project that has water and sewer with it as well. The ice arena roof were to the point where I think we've talked about this before. They said. Really, the only way we're gonna be able to address the continual leaking is to replace the entire roof. Mayor would be able to probably answer more questions on that. He's been very involved in that. Um, corn palace plaza expansion, mayor had me add. With splash park hopefully to try to kill two birds with one stone. But again, that's proposed out of entertainment tax fund. Then we've got overlay projects. And again, the railroad trail I told you was dependent on grant funding that we applied for. You will see a listing of those, all of the proposed infrastructure projects. And Susan, oh, yours is gonna be in equipment. Your question was on equipment. I will get there. Um, this is just a map showing where those infrastructure projects are planned. So this would be the sidewalk assessment project. The city has some costs for the city park, but most of the costs are assessed to the. A gene, a joint, a joint, adjacent landowner, excuse me. Here's one of the parking lots that's proposed and that's the expansion of the current parking lot that's located by Hitchcock Park. So we do have. Funding included for that. And the other one, and Joe could speak to this a little bit more, but it's the parking lot and there's some storm sewer improvements with this as well by the ice arena. Ooh, that's really small, but if you can see the blue lines on, on the map here, this just shows you in town where those overlay projects would be. This is our thirteenth avenue project. This will have uh water sewer and storm sewer improvements included in this project. And the hope with this one, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, is to help with some of the flooding in that area. So that's one of the areas that was identified on those, on the studies that we did. And so this would help. Alleviate some of the flooding concerns in that area. And this is a lift station and there's combined water and sewer costs on this project. This is North Omen and. For some reason I have two pictures of it. Um, we're gonna bring SPN up in a little bit when I get through the rest of these and they're gonna talk about. Options that we have for the intersection at twenty-third and Omen. We're gonna need some general direction from council. On how we move forward so we can finalize the design. The design of this project was budgeted in twenty-twenty-five with construction in twenty-six. Go ahead.
Um, Joe, so this is the start of what we're gonna look at out there with um getting a, a wider road or a safe passage for pedestrians. That is correct, yes. And give me the timeline again.
So we have it in the budget to be constructed next year.
Yeah, that's proposed for twenty-six.
But, but will that read these, the, the actual road itself?
Mm-hmm.
I will also, which I, I just read it as the, the storm sewer, but it will be.
No, it's all three.
It is.
Brand new road, curb and gutter.
Yeah.
Um, sidewalk on one side. Um, and improvements to the twenty-third and uh Omen intersection.
Awesome.
There's costs for all three shown in the budget. Water sewer, paving, storm sewer.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. So Stephanie, you list uh Anderson William drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Then you list Anderson William drainage improvements.
Uh, here. Show me, can you?
You've gone down.
Uh, no, you're too far down, I think. Developing fund.
Anderson and Williams drainage.
Eight hundred and two.
No, this is a hun- one point six.
Yeah, up there's eight hundred and two then.
Oh, those might be two different costs. I'll have to look at that and I'll clarify and send it out.
Cause you have it on the, the major project with their talents, one point six.
It should be one point six, I think. I think that's an error. I'll have to look at it. I'm not sure what that is. I thought I caught them all. Oh, wait, we already did these. Okay, facility improvements. Um. These are things that are really just making changes to our existing facilities. Like I said, we had five pools that were listed as rejects, so those ones we have to get done. Next year, we had some that were immediate replacement due to the condition they were in that we are doing this year out of contingency.
Well, make us a small comment about the, the awning for the scale operators landfill. Um, made a few trips out there this summer. A recommendation would be we get a drive-up windows so we get smoother traffic. Flow going in and out. And I've talked to Mr. Medium and he thought that would be a great idea just because there's. When it's busy, especially we get trees down and stuff, it just starts plugging for everything. Where would that be placed?
At the scale at the landfill. I don't know how it would work because you're on the wrong side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you could, I mean, everybody's.
Instead of getting out and walking to the office, which I do once a year and it makes me mad.
It's either that or we add an extra, another scale and I thought the window would be a lot cheaper than another scale.
So you're saying you'd build, sorry.
Build another building that's on the other side of the.
No, you wouldn't have to. Everybody's got a passenger window. So you sway, go a lot, dump, come back and grab your ticket, sign it, leave.
You're saying just build an addition.
Yeah, 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 this, it'd be up higher so you could reach in the windows and cars.
Well, and they have several other things there. Uh, you can see the door improvements and I think they also had some flooring too out there, so. Um, that fund was adding, I think, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars to reserve so they. Would have the ability to do that in current if, if that's the direction council would like to suggest. We already talked about this, but this, um, so the drawing on the ba- bottom right, just so you know, I didn't ask designer to use this, so I hope they're not gonna be mad, but. This was uh an initial kind of schematic concept they gave us. Like I said, they did that work at no cost to the city. To give an idea of what could be included in that building and the estimated cost with design fee. So. I just really have to say thank you again for doing that so we could see whether it was even feasible for us to move forward. Initially, um. We talked about looking at this building to the north of the old water treatment plant. But because of the requirements with fire trucks, like they have to be in heated conditions because of the materials, the chemicals and things like that. On the trucks and we knew that I, the roof would have to be done in, in so much time. And they were adding to an existing metal building. It really was driving the cost within five years up to closer to one point eight million dollars. And at that, we thought, why are we doing it on to an old building? Maybe we need to build what they need. Um, the other thing that was kind of complicated about the front of that building, there's a whole bunch of utilities right here. That would have to be relocated, which we thought would end up pretty expensive as well. And if they located that. Fire station here, it was gonna be easier for them to get the trucks in and out and, and quick access out to the highway.
So the mayor brought up a, a good point on the water treatment, the old water treatment plant that just sits there and mothballs. If there's a, maybe an opportunity down the road. Who knows? But if there is, that, is there a public road where we could, we could actually. Maybe plot that off as a separate building or? I'm, I'm probably not asking the question right, but are you guys getting?
It makes sense.
To have access to it.
I think we could provide access, a public access to uh access those, access those buildings. Um, as you're recommending.
Okay. So just so that the, the people are listening on, would you explain why we are doing this? Cause some people are like, why do we need another fire station?
Sure, um, so in the past, the city ha- the city has a. Storage building out by the airport that we have called our second fire station. Um, what we have learned from ISO is that because we are a full-time professional fire department, our staff. Are always on, that we're not calling volunteers in. They know that our staff will always respond from where they're at. Which is the public safety building. Due to that, um. The distance that they would have to travel from the current public safety building to some parts of town on the north side is too far. And it resulted in people's insurance ratings going um. Much higher because they're being treated almost like they're in a rural area instead of in a community that has professional fire service. So when our former fire chief was doing uh background on this. Um, we learned that because we are a full-time fire department and unless they're responding from. Basically where their dorms are, where they're living, um, it would not do anything to lower those rates and to make our response times faster on the north side of the lake. Um, there are, it also have been times when we've had calls where it has taken them that long to get. To the response because it just takes that long to get to the northwest side of town. Um. So what would happen now is you would have essentially four staff at the new station, four staff at the existing station. And when the call comes in, depending on where the closest response time is, that's who's dispatched first to the call. So, um, yeah.
So. I, I asked this because somebody reached out to me. How does a volunteer fire department? How do they get insurance then?
But, well, the difference is because they're volunteer, they're being called in to whichever station is closest to the response. It makes no sense.
So the response time would be less or more than?
Yep.
Yeah, it just doesn't.
It doesn't make sense. I agree with you. Um, especially because our response time, regardless of what building they're coming to. Is always gonna be faster than someone getting called in from wherever they were as a volunteer to respond, but. Um, this will help our insurance ratings for our residents and it will help our response times for the north side of the, of the. Um. City. The funny thing is, is the comment was, oh, maybe this would be the slower station and actually. Like, they think it's probably gonna be a more heavily used side, just because we do have some retirement. Areas in that and we might have more ambulance calls on the north side of town. So there would be a fire truck and ambulance sta- stationed at both locations. And you're gonna have four staff at both locations. They're good, gonna respond based on where they're going to at the call. So the red little square there is just a really. Generic showing you where it would be placed. You guys have already seen this. I just included it in case there was questions. I really think since this whole thing is one point two, if. For half of that, you could potentially start with the part that is between the plaza and the Bradley's part. Okay, equipment. You had a question on the miratic acid.
Acid.
In the, it's in the rec center. Go ahead. Use the mic, please.
So initially we requested an acid feeder system for the outdoor pool, which is more expensive and it's larger. And that would replace a barrel system. The barrel, when, we have an alarm that goes off whenever the barrel gets down toward empty. And depending upon what time of the day it is, somebody gets a call in and they have to go in at midnight to in the morning, whatever that is, to go replace that feeder system. Now we're looking at trying this out in a smaller scale basis, the rec center first with tablets. Versus a feeder system because that will be something where we're not even using a liquid chemical. We would use a tablet. So we're trying it there first on a smaller scale.
So it ends up being a cost savings.
Correct.
In the long run.
Cost savings as far as staff and as far as the product and as far as safety.
Great, thanks.
And then I just wanted to point out for our capital projects that we do have. A lot of those projects have outside funding, so even reduction for those projects doesn't do anything for the budget necessarily. Um, you can see the category is broken out here. So we've got STIP funding. That's the money we get from the state for our road improvement project. We burned through that five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars pretty fast. Does, I think our total costs are closer to one point six this year. Uh, we have the restricted fund reserves, state revolve, and that is for. Um, the two projects and the general fund and then the entertainment tax fund, state revolving loan and donation of funds. In addition to the capital projects, council typically asks me to show any engineering, professional services or other things. Included in the budget. So that's what this list is. I already mentioned the ones in the mayor's budget. We also have the.
Tell us a little bit about them. What's the student council project?
Can you, we'll maybe wait for the mayor to come back and he can answer those for you. So I, I, I don't wanna speak on his, his behalf. Um, the storm sewer study would really be the last area that we need to study in town. So we can start putting together that master plan of what we're gonna do for storm sewer projects. On the storm stewers, su- storm sewer study east of Samborn and south of the high school.
Okay, hundred thirty thousand.
Yep, and that is in the storm sewer budget now. And then we have some design costs here, you'll see. Um, that's for doing. Just like, um, boy, it was back in twenty fifteen. I think Joe was still at ESPN. Uh, where we did a list of all of our projects that needed to be done to get added to the state water plan. That allowed us to apply for SRFs. We're really, we've worked our way through that plan, so it's time for us to update those. So that's what those two design fees is to update the water and sewer projects for that plan. Mayor, they went, um, uh, council member Jarks had a question on the student council projects. I didn't want it.
I guess, um, not just that one, but the, can you tell us what these are? The Dakota Institute, the retail strategy is the student council project.
Yep, so the first one, student council project. Yep, so the first one, student council project, these are a little out of the ordinary. I'll start with that. Um, so the first one, I was talking with Dr. Childs, you know, try to get kids to get bought into Stan and Mitchell and, you know, you know, living here and growing up here. Um, one thing we could do is give their student council, kinda like us, a ten thousand dollar budget. And they could decide what they wanna do for a public improvement, whether it be to a park or a facility or the corn palace or whatever the case is. And then they would decide how that money gets spent. Maybe they spend it all, maybe they spend half, maybe they spend none. Then that project would have to come here for you guys to approve on it, uh, and then the project would get done. So it's kinda just a thing to integrate student council and city council, like, just in a simple way. Uh, second one, Dakota Institute, that's kinda like the two thousand twelve Dr. Brown study that gets referenced a lot, so that's been thirteen years. It talks about imports, exports, what businesses we need, what businesses would help out, where our money comes from as far as manufacturing, retail. Hospital, stuff like that. I would just update that study, that's thirteen years old. Uh, and then the last one is retail strategies, which is kinda like, I don't know how to really describe it. They kinda do like geo fencing and then they can tell you where your money's spent. It's kinda like that Buxton study, but a little different. But then also as far as recruiting other retail businesses, they go and represent like at, on a national scale. And then recruit businesses to your town.
The thing that is unique about the retail strategies is that instead of relying on credit card data, they rely more on cell phone data. Showing, so you get a better picture of people coming in your community, where they visit once they bang to your community. So if you wanna know where do they go after they go to the corn balls or where do they go after they go to Canelas? That's the geo fencing that the mayor was referring.
Right, and then they target like what kind of shopper that we're missing through what they call leakage. So maybe they go to like three sports facility or sporting.
Yeah.
Good locations and then like, they don't buy, so then they go to Sioux Falls and they buy it, this one specific business. What they would do is target that business and then try to get them here and prove to them, say, hey, this, there's a need for your business in this town. So it's a very complicated thing, but pretty cool.
It it feels like that's kind of uh, something that maybe could be embraced also by the chamber. And the CBB that that's something, cause they were the champions of the Buxton study. Um, uh, would we be involving them in this project?
I'll involve anyone that can make it a success, I guess.
I also wanted to point out, on your desk today, there was a single sheet of paper. It looks like, can I use yours? Cause I gave mine like this. Um, this is everything that was cut from the budget. The mayor wanted to put together a priority list, so from if he had the opportunity to put something back into the budget. Top to bottom, priority list highest to lowest, that's what this would be. And before we get into additional discussion on individual items, is it okay if SPN comes in and talks about North Olmen? Is that okay? Okay. Whoops, I don't need a timer. Hold on, I pulled up the wrong thing. So Jeff, just know, I stayed on my timer.
I get ten minutes, right?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'm a pass.
As you might imagine. Jeff, as you might imagine, we're very excited about this, so.
Alright. Oh, alright, so I'll talk about the. I was like the Olmen Street project, we're gonna do a very quick review of the of the project. Uh, more specifically, we're gonna talk a little bit about the traffic study. I am not the traffic engineer that put the study together, uh, but for ten minutes, uh, I'm here to give you the quick overview of it. And uh, the gentleman from HDR um, are the ones that that helped us out a lot with it. Uh, so we do project overview, again, traffic study, we're gonna talk a little bit about the traffic analysis, safety and some of the costs with it. Project is Olmen Street from the intersection of twenty-third to Kemper includes whole street reconstruction with curb and gutter. Shared use path on the east side of the road, water replacement, sanitary sewer replacement, along with storm sewer on the project. You'll see on the quick little, this is your handout, one that kinda shows a little bit closer. You'll see we don't really have anything through the intersection of twenty-third and Olmen, because uh, that's the one I want a little bit of direction on what we're gonna go there. So the traffic analysis, uh, this was a study that was completed by HDR. It focused on uh, three intersections. Uh, twenty-third and Olmen, first and Burr and first and Foster. We're not gonna talk about the First Avenue ones today. That'll be a future project that we're working on the design, but we wanna talk more about the twenty-third avenue intersection. So the traffic study, um, real simple grading system, A is good, F is bad, right? Uh, so we're gonna talk about the level of service, what comes with it and the delays that come with it. Uh, you'll see an app has a greater than fifty-second delay, uh, is your average delay as you're sitting at the intersection, uh, waiting to go. Uh, so the intersection, um, the upper left is your, in the, in the white box of the existing traffic counts. Uh, they were, had traffic study up there, recording it, I believe in around April. Difficult year to try to get that intersection figured out for traffic counts, because we had lots of construction going on over there. We had different road closed, uh, main street, um, lift station projects, all of that. Uh, the blue numbers in that upper left are what they're projected for twenty fifty, so you'll see they're almost doubling within that intersection. Um, let's see, lower right kinda goes through what the existing intersection is. Lower right goes through, you know, it's existing stop control, there's stop in the one direction, open through the other. You'll see that uh, in the morning right now, we have a um, overall, we have a B rating in the morning. And A rating in the afternoon, worst case scenario, we get a C and a B rating as it sits today. You'll see as we go to the twenty fifty build option, we're Fs across the board. Uh, with the worst one being three hundred and three seconds, five minutes of sitting waiting for you to go through. You're gonna start forcing yourself through the intersection when you get to that, and that's what we wanna try to avoid. Uh, lower left is what those estimated peak hours are. Actually, I'm gonna go to the next one that kinda highlights a little bit more, because like I said, I'm not a traffic engineer. But as I drive that intersection almost every day, um, I see a lot of these, these items, the ones I wanna point out, if you just even look at the existing of it. Uh, if you look at where we have the the two hundred numbers, um, excuse me, the morning, the morning hours, twenty fifty. Uh, we got two, two ten flowing from west to east, two ten flowing from north to south. We got a bunch make a left-hand turn from Olmen onto twenty-third. And then you look in the the afternoon, you got uh, two hundred making that right turn onto Olmen. Um, hundred fifty-five going straight through from the north, hundred ninety-five going straight through from the south. And then uh, a little bit less than the going to the west. Uh, but I look at this from the, just a real simple aspect of driving that intersection and sitting at the intersection, I drive through it quite often. It was sitting there, see a car coming down, wait and all of a sudden they'll put on a blinker, take that right turn, like, oh, I could've got through there. You know, um, and that kinda stuff, and you get, and there is a lot of right-hand turn, and they're like, oh, are they gonna turn, are they not gonna turn? Um, so that would, it's those, to me, those traffic movements that we see that huge number turning right. With the huge number turning left right around it, where they could be going at the same time, if we had the roundabout type scenario that we're gonna talk about. But that's where that, you know, just me sitting there and driving it, I think I even said to Joe, even before the traffic study came out, it's like, golly, this would be a great intersection. For a roundabout type scenario. So they looked at all the intersections though. They looked at your standard stop control before we stop. You could see that this is, and this is the twenty fifty build. Uh, you see, we get to a C rating with just a four-way stop. And you go to the traffic signals, um, you'll get to Bs and Cs uh, based on the time of day that you're there. Uh, but the one I guess I wanna highlight is the fact if we go to roundabout full build, it's the lowest, the lowest ones we get through that section of it. Alright, in your pamphlet, there's uh, on the handout, just kinda goes through some of the concepts of a roundabout. I'll point out the very lower left, it talks about on the average roundabouts reduce severe crashes. Those result in injury or loss of life by seventy-eight to eighty-two percent. So it's really about creating a safe, safe environment with it. Uh, the back page of it talks a little bit about why that is, you know, we're gonna have a lot of conflicts. You look at the upper left picture, there's lines crisscrossing every which direction. Uh, they got a whole bunch of different highlighted colors of how pedestrians are gonna interact with the the traffic as they're trying to cross it. Obviously, roundabout has a lot of less of those conflicts. The other, the middle one talks about the fact that is you're pedestrian, you're only crossing one lane of traffic at a time. So you go through the one lane that's going in one direction, you're on an island, you can wait for, come the other direction, you're only crossing one row of traffic. Where even if we go to a traffic light, especially if it's got a center turn lane or something like that, now you're crossing three lanes of track, traffic as you go. So for from pedestrian, shared use path type scenario, we really reduce those amount of crossings. And that's where a lot of that safety comes into it. Um, it's also gonna promote lower speed. As traffic comes in from the west, they're gonna approach that roundabout, they've gotta slow down. To make those turns and curves around that. The slower we're moving through those intersections, the safer the environment is. Okay, so cost, trying to verify the the different options, and this does get a little bit difficult. Because as we do the roundabout, we gotta go quite a bit further out the other directions in order to accomplish uh, everything that we need to. Right now, if we're just gonna go in intersection, we're just gonna replace what we needed to, basically what was kinda done for the sewer project. But just to to make some of those changes, we could bring that cost down. But these costs that are up here try to represent that same entire footprint as far as east, west, north, south, that we would need to replace with it. It also in the idea of going to a traffic circle, um, and the roundabout part is, I'm anticipating more of that being concrete than asphalt. So when we try to compare that to the traditional insect intersection, I've got the cost in there to include that as a concrete intersection. Just trying to make those as similar as we possibly can with it. The only difference in cost between the traditional intersection and the traffic signal intersection, it would still include the five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. To replace all the pavement, get all our crosswalks in, get all of the sidewalks and all of that. But then, of course, it's putting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of traffic signals onto it. And I think that three hundred and fifty was based off the recent main street project. I don't know if this one would be a little bit different because of the site distances and the speed of traffic, if they'd have to be bigger, higher. Or anything of that nature, uh, that would have to be into that design part of it. The roundabout obviously is gonna have a little bit more upfront cost, because we've just got a little bit more pavement to be able to accomplish what we're, what we're needing. A lot more curb because of all of the islands and stuff of that nature. Uh, one thing this does not include is any type of annual maintenance costs. Uh, you're gonna have more updates with your traffic signals, you got power cost, you got stuff of that nature. Um, that that you would not have, obviously, with the roundabout. Everything's gonna have maintenance that comes with it. Uh, but you know, you're not gonna have daily electrical costs and some of those items.
Did you figure any land acquisition or would that not be needed?
Uh, we didn't, uh, I don't believe we included any of that, and I'll get into that here a little bit more. Uh, we do have, from a city standpoint, uh, quite a significant amount of that already covered with this project, just because of the nature of what it is. That's one of the things that makes this a a more prominent uh, intersection for it. This is rough layout. I will tell you, the scale doesn't quite work out right, and the bound, in the, where it lines up is is a little bit off. So, um, you know, this is, we're not in the final design for that aspect of it. Um, and this, s- scale-wise, this just didn't quite fit right, but we wanted to be able to show it with the, with the aerial background behind it. Uh, so on the the land part that you're talking about, southeast corner is already all city property. Northeast corner is already city property. There is additional property that the city has for the bike path on the northwest corner of it. But there is those those elements uh, into that southwest corner and possibly a little bit into that, into that northwest corner as well. Depending on where that final design uh, lays out.
Would this be a one-lane or a two-lane?
This would be a single-lane roundabout, yeah, and that was the recommendation with uh, the traffic study. That we don't have to accomplish a a two-lane intersection into it. Uh, we're fine on a traffic numbers from a single-lane aspect.
The only reason I ask is cause I, I'm pretty sure that Twin City Fan does receiving.
Yes.
And they always come up twenty-third and go around it.
It will be able to accommodate the truck traffic and the truck turning. It, a normal WB sixty-seven traffic or tractor trailer i- is is part of that, that design.
Okay.
So recommendation for intersection type, obviously, I mean, to me, the the roundabout is by all means the the safest. Provides the last, greatest level of service. Um, it does cost a little bit more for the initial capital improvement. Um, if we don't go to that today, or if we continue with a traditional, I would imagine it would stay at a two-way. Uh, for a period of time in which the the traffic increased, and then we would maybe be looking at a four-way. Uh, I I honestly, personally, I don't see this going to a lighted intersection. I could see it go to a four-way stop. But I wouldn't necessarily see it going to a lighted intersection at some point, but uh, you know, maybe I'm wrong. I mean, you can see where in the, in the, in the um, the grading that they provided. That it would, you know, we'd still be in that C level, you know, in the, in that twenty, twenty fifty bill. Just another if, little bit of information on it, there are currently, and this was a article that came out um, in January of this year. Uh, so this is maybe changed by now, but there's currently eighteen roundabouts in South Dakota, seven of them in Sioux Falls, and then some various other communities that that have them. Uh, the picture right there is uh, in Sioux Falls, Louise and two hundred seventy-first street. Um, and I do have some other pictures of some other ones here a little bit later. Schedule-wise, I'm hoping at least if we don't get full direction on it today, by by Monday, we got an idea of what we wanna go through with design for this intersection. Uh, our next step for us is gonna be meet with utility companies, as in Northwestern Energy and Communication Lines. Cause that intersection is very busy from that aspect. We've already had some initial conversations with about him, with them about this project. But we have to really start talking about where that layout is, how much of their overhead power is affected, gas lines, stuff of that nature. Um, we would look then for uh, HDR to complete the roundabout geometrics into October. So that we can complete our design, get to a ninety-nine percent plan review and review that again with city staff, property owners in November. With the idea of beginning to advertise in December and open bids, December, January with construction next season. This is just uh, the street view of that intersection in Sioux Falls. This is one, a hu- a hundred and thirty-five foot, the one we've got proposed is a hundred and fifty, uh, this one is in Sisitin. Here's a hundred and eighty-foot diameter one, I believe this is on Highway eighty-one, US eighty-one in Watertown. Uh, so we know there's a lot of truck traffic coming down through that one, right? Uh, this is that one looking at it from the street view. I think that's it. So, questions? That was, I don't know what I'm after time. That's a lot really fast.
Would this project include sidewalk on the northwest side?
Yep, it would include on both, because we do have a uh, bike path that goes to the northwest. So we'd wanna integrate uh, the future sidewalk going north, um, so that sidewalk then will be connected from there all the way um, to the lake. I believe that bike path goes, and then we would have connection to the bike path that goes along the railroad tracks to the lake as well.
What would be like a timeline of how long this project would take? Would it take the whole summer or month or two or? Yes, it would, it would take the whole summer, yeah. And I mean, a lot of, a lot of element in the design, there's gonna be a lot of, you know, we haven't worked through the whole scheduling and pattern of of how that's gonna go through. Um, there'd have to be some phasing of different items. I don't think the intersection itself would be through the whole part. But from one end of the project to the other, yes, that would be, that would be a summer project. Well, there used to be a shutdown out there anyway.
With the lift station that put in, that's, it took, it took majority of the summer. Jeff, can you explain the five fifteen of, in my mind, you just add two, two stop signs and you got it accomplished. I don't know how you get from there to five fifteen of having a traditional four-way stop.
Sure, sure, um. Well, so, so, so going from where it is today, you're saying to to that, right? So this, again, I'm looking at constructed, completely reconstructed with curb and gutter, sidewalk ramps, sidewalks through the intersections. sidewalk ramps, sidewalks through the intersections, um concrete through the full intersection. Widen that all to a a three lane width so that we would have uh a left yeah, a center turning lane or right turning lane, whatever uh H G R would come back with those geometrics of it. Uh, and it also includes, you know, if if I go back to
Oh, you're not in.
Okay, if if we go back to the the figure I gave you uh right there. It includes going all the way back to construct an intersection to where the red lines are ending on this one. Because, again, and that's what I'm saying, trying to compare the same thing. You know, I mean, those roads, we know twenty third going east and west probably needs to be a future project at some point. I mean, one of the things they identified in their um original master plan was that needs to go to more of a three lane um, street, I believe, in in that part of it. So it's including going to the full extreme as you see on that of all the red. So that's why, and just trying to compare the same amount of construction with it. If we don't go that way, then yes, then obviously the capital improvement today could go down. Because I don't have to replace that all the way, all the way to the south where that's going and that far. But trying to show as close of cost collectively through the whole project and all the improvements that would be not only for that intersection today or for tomorrow, let's so if we look at what's gonna go south, let's say we redo Omen all the way to eighth. Well, if I'm already get three hundred or two hundred feet of the done with the roundabout, I don't have to do that in the future. So I'm trying to compare that same two hundred to three hundred feet in this cost estimate now with that intersection.
Okay.
That, does that, yeah.
So just for council's information, I guess, if he's looking for a direction on what kinda intersection you're gonna want. Um, I just asked if we have that budgeted, it's not included in the budget now, so we'll have to get from him what that difference is, and then you would have to, we would have to look at making reductions elsewhere to add the roundabout in.
And and there is, there is some of that in that cost estimate that we have, that we gave preliminary for the project.
I'm talking about what we have budgeted.
Right, right, right. You've got, you've got the four point six, is it? Um, you know, some of that already had some contingencies and incidental construction that will make up some of that, some of that difference.
But again, we'd still have to know what the dollar amount is so it can be incorporated.
And Stephanie, all general fund or is part of it out of the water?
It's water, wastewater and storm sewer, but this one we actually had, um, hold on.
Because that would make a difference of how how much we're gonna have to tap general fund.
I think we were doing an S R F for this one. I'm trying to pull it up on.
Correct, this one was being paid for by an S R F loan, uh, and then the majority or the rest of it was gonna be paid um, by in our water account.
So, is, I, I'm gonna ask a stupid question, but there's no D O T kinds of funds for something like a roundabout?
That's your ongoing maintenance cost of having roads.
So, um.
Can can I ask Joe what his personal opinion is?
You wanna be put on the spot, Joe?
And and if you, you know, if you wanna think about it a little bit too, obviously, but you know, obvi- we we wanna look to you to make sure that you're happy with with what's gonna end up out there.
From an engineering perspective, um, roundabouts usually work very well. Um, I do know, uh, there are people with strong feelings against them. Um, but from an engineering standpoint, they're they're very efficient. Um, for us, I feel like they would be um, cost effective for maintenance versus say a traffic light. Um, because we don't have maintenance into it, it'll be a concrete surfacing, so there'll be um way less maintenance we would have to do on the intersection. Um, if we went to, you know, eventually a four way stop, then it's just, you know, it's less efficient and um, how much, you know, future grumblings there would be because of wait times on stop.
The majority of the negative to in a roundabout is I've never been on one. Yeah, and that's what people say, and and in reality, if you get through them, it's it's very easy. It it truly is. You you would think that people just be running into each other and it's the opposite. Uh, they seem to be very safe. What what if we would do this? I'll throw this out, let you guys think about it. What if we put this on the agenda for next week, uh, a week from tonight? And then that way it gives us a little opportunity to talk to a few people and and maybe Jeff might have a little bit better numbers and Joe, you can think about it a a little bit then too, but it it's, I'm I'm glad, I I've been bugging Joel on this and he knows that. Uh, on this intersection and he says, we got a, we got a study coming. I thought there were just gonna be strips out there and counting the the number of cars and that was gonna be, oh my lord. This is amazing what they put together on this. I mean, this and and like you brought up, Jeff, is we have to pay attention to what's happening on all of Omen and all of twenty third. And now that we're taking the dive in on Omen, uh going to Kemper. You know, what perfect timing this would would be, so appreciate you guys' efforts on this, Joe. It it looks really nice.
Yeah, we really couldn't ask you to make a decision when you just got the information tonight. Um, knowing that this is an S R F funded project, you know, we're, it's just gonna be a little bit higher debt service repayment, whatever that final cost is, so, um.
If we can get some of those numbers too, it'd be good. I I don't know where, if the interest rates, if they're locked in already, Joe, or if you have to visit with the state on that.
We just met with the state or we met with District Three um this morning.
Okay.
Um, on this project, um, putting together the uh application and what that looks like. Um, so we're gonna, I would say by the next meeting, we should have all that dialed in and be able to give you firm, firm estimates and where we think we'll be at.
Okay. One thing I just wanna comment that I learned, um, in the study page thirty one, it talks about roundabouts and pedestrians. Um, really the focus on it being the the safety of that, uh considering we've got the shared use path that runs through this part of it. Um, it it talks a little bit more, it's right before the kinda the handout, it it has some uh another figure and it it talks about the accident side of it. It says page thirty one, I guess, on mine.
So, so now I, we had a trip this year, we went out to Wisconsin, and after I got through my five out of twenty eight roundabouts that I went through. First of all, right away, I was thinking, what are these people thinking out here? But what, but once you got through them and you understood how they work, and it's not the first roundabout I've been through, but when I consistently was going through them, cuz that's what we were doing. It was like a breeze. Once you understand the concept of where you're going and what you're trying to do, it's like, wow, these things are pretty smooth, so I I do agree with you, Jeff. The fear of it is right away is, oh my god, I've never been in there before, I've never done a roundabout, what is it? What is it gonna do? There's a lot of, a lot of thoughts that go through it and little panic attacks maybe some people, but once you get used to a roundabout and those that are gonna be using this are gonna be majority of be living in that area, so after a few times going through it, even though we got the golf course out, we got the lake and everything else going on, but a lot of, a lot of the activity will be from homeowners that direction that'll be using on a daily basis. I, if it's a direction that we decide to go as a city, I I truly believe those that are using it on a regular basis will get very comfortable with it, is what I'm trying to get at, so.
Okay.
What are the two other intersections, Jeff? You mentioned first and Foster and?
First and Burr. Yeah, this study's gonna talk about it, and we'll come back later and talk about those intersections and what we might wanna do with with that.
That was part of the transportation study that the city did with H G.
Right, okay, and we would want to keep those projects separate, Joe.
So right now, S P N is under contract um for uh reconstruction of first half from Berta Foster.
Design.
Or, yeah, what did I say?
Reconstruction.
Design of the reconstruction. Um, and so we wanted to look at those intersections individually to make sure that we're incorporating the appropriate improvements with those.
And that design is part of the twenty five budget. Um, two things that came up during the presentation that I just wanted to point out, so this is actually our total cost of eligible, I'm sorry. Uh, I didn't mean to step in there. Um, I mentioned I knew that we were over one point two. So our total eligible cost that we could use our state funding would be one point two million. So we're using five hundred and ninety five thousand, the rest is being supported from general fund. And then, and uh just to show you the starting point that we started at, we started at a twenty two point eight million dollar deficit. If you only looked at general fund supported items, we were at twenty four point eight million dollars. Um, and as we went through the process, we had some revenue where we added the, some of those projects to be funded by S R F loans. Basically, the stormwater, the Omen one we just talked about. And then there you can see the fifteen point three million dollars worth of reductions. Uh, some of that is operational, but the vast majority of that is a single page sheet on your desk with the mayor's priority list of things to add back in. Um, and then we had some additional changes when we had our department head review with the mayor. Which brought us to where we are now, where we're at our structurally balanced budget. Uh, we do have, like I said, three point seven five million dollars coming out of dedicated general fund reserves. That's for the second fire station and the ice arena roof. Um, I did make you a full I believe I have this, and I'll put this on the website as well, but this sheet I emailed out, it'll have the list of all of the subsidy applications that we've received for however long they go back. Um, you'll see what was approved in twenty twenty five. The application for twenty six and the proposed for twenty six. Um, a couple of the things you will have received. You got this sheet, um, which shows all of our major projects. The items on the right are just showing if it's something that's funded by grant funds, cuz if you make a reduction on those items, it's not gonna balance the budget or allow you to add other things, and if there's revenue tied to it. And I, as with other years, went ahead and put together your council review list. That shows all of the major projects listed. I did put everything that was cut at the top of that handout for you. Just so that you can have a chance to look through those. And then at the next section, it'll show your subsidy applications. If I can get down there ever, there's a lot of capital. Okay, there's your design, engineering and other costs, and then your subsidy application. So that would be on your sheet that's on your desk today. You all received an email today about basketball car courts. We did have eight thousand dollars, and, or I mean, Kevin and I just went through this now, it's drawing a blank. We had eight thousand dollars budgeted this year for asphalt. The um, mayor has asked that we consider doing that in concrete and, or, concrete, yes. Instead of asphalt, so those costs are shown a- as a, just a discussion item in case you wanna factor that in at all. Um, currently, the eight thousand dollars that we have budgeted in twenty twenty five will not happen at this time. And then I, like I said, you have a one pager that just shows the priority list of cuts, and the mayor had me put them in his top priority down, so that would be highest priority at the top and the lowest priority at the bottom. And I gave you a whole bunch of information, so I wanna be sure that we take time to answer any other questions in case I didn't see hands going.
I have a quick question. Um, I noticed when you showed the amount that we were budgeting for the corn palace decorating for next year, that it was higher than what we're actually paying this year. Tell me again.
Um, that's not just for the contractor to hang the corn, it's for the corn grower and the design of the murals. I just wanted to show the total cost of what, at least the ones I can easily identify what those costs of the murals are.
And I think I saw we're still gonna hire the college kids in the summer to do the grasses. And that's probably included in there too.
Yeah, and we did do, we did run a report before we went out for bids this year to hang the corn and Mary, maybe, I know you're gonna remember this off the top of your head. I think the wages that we had from September through March were forty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it's forty two, close enough, yeah.
See, I knew you'd have it. So, we know that that forty two thousand is offset with the seventy five. So we did a reduction in part time wages that we would have otherwise been spending in the fall and in the winter for hanging the corn to offset the contractor doing the corn.
So will we um anticipate that the contractor would start sooner? Um, or as soon as the corn was ready instead of, I mean, could they start sooner?
For this year?
For next year.
Oh, for next year.
Like, I'm just saying, since we know this now and we have, I mean presumably we'll have the same bidder or someone else, can they start doing those murals earlier than they're like, so, started yet?
One thing I would need to check on, and we can follow up with you, is that the corn growers contract currently has dates associated with it, and we're in that contract now, so I need to look that up and we can bring that back to a future meeting, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be how however we decided to do the contract and when corn is available.
Making a note here.
I'll ask a quick question. Um, had a discussion with with Tim, and maybe you can kinda bring us up to speed a little bit. When when we voted down the rental uh policy, um, we had some discussion on potentially hiring another nuisance officer and trying to widen the scope a little bit. And not make it uh that it's, that it's all complaint driven, that we can drive some of the uh, ourselves of of uh going around or doing whatever, but Tim, you had a little bit of of discussion, I think, with Justin and and I know it's not included into the budget, but maybe you can kinda bring us up to date of some of the discussions you guys had.
Yeah, um, I've just been working with Justin to try and uh address um the concerns, would I say? Um, that the rental agencies had with the policy as we proposed it. Um, and working through what changes we could make to make our current code reflect um, a more proactive approach for the city, um, without being uh what I feel like they thought was an overreach um for rental inspections. And so, um, that language is not even in in infancy state right, right now, we're still working through that. Um, and essentially, I just keep asking Justin questions, and then he tells me whether or not I'm too far off the legal path or not. Um, and then, uh, we're hoping sometime next uh spring we'll be able to bring that language back, so.
Sorry, I'm changing my screen settings so I can actually see what I'm pulling up. Okay, there. I noted that just as a future discussion item, I'll uh uh all, excuse me, I will also add the roundabout. I know that will be discussed at the next meeting, but, um, yeah.
So the seven fifty that we've got in for the Corn Palace um Plaza area, I think it's seven fifty. Have have we had any discussions at all of what that could look like, or is that just strictly up to us? And we can help design it, or the Corn Palace Committee can come up with some ideas or whatever. Is that, i- is there any initial thoughts on that? Other than, other than, I do know the parking lot that's between Bradley and the Corn Palace has to go. That is, that that's just an accident waiting to happen.
To be honest, at this point, it was just, um, the first proposal was not received. It there was, it wasn't supported by council, so we know that there has to be improvements in that plaza air or in the parking lot area by Bradley's. So the hope was to do some set, something that was originally intended there for a kid's activity of some sort in that area. We'd have to come up with a project and a design and bring it back to council for approval. Just trying to get a consensus on a dollar amount that people would be okay with spending. So no ideas at this point. Hopefully, taking some of the features that were shown and trying to incorporate them. I had had, I did have two different groups reach out that were interested in potentially supporting a kid's feature in the plaza. We've had some other ideas about sponsorship and, yeah, we'd like to pursue those, I guess, if possible.
Of course, I talked to the mayor a little bit today, um, the the recent developments with the lake, we're gonna obviously have the study, uh that will be in twenty six.
It sounds like twenty five.
Oh, we're gonna be able to get that in twenty five.
Well, so I guess.
So we don't have to include, I guess, the the question is, we don't have to worry about the budget, that's really my question.
You you will, to some extent. We do have budget this year that obviously for the drawdown, that we're not gonna end up using until we get through whatever the study results are for the hydrology study. Um, Joe was in the process of reaching out to um see what some availability might be for that study and costs associated. Um, if we had that by the next meeting, we would bring it. What I would anticipate is that you're going to have to you would have to make some kind of an adjustment in twenty twenty six in order to continue with the original design for the. in order to continue with the original design for the drawdown if we get to that point. Um, it could be earmarked in reserve till you get to that point, or we could do a cash transfer right away. I would assume you wanna get through what the results of that study are and know where we're going and address it at that point. You could use the funds we have budgeted this year for the design.
And we're still gonna leave that, um, agenda item on the, or that you said, your timeline, even though it's, it's gonna be kind of a a guess to a certain degree, but Joe, you can bring us up to speed on what you learned between now and a week from now. I think it's good to keep that out there.
We're gonna try to gather as much information.
And I can truly tell everybody out there that Jordan told us about this on Friday and he let, and he had a press release on Saturday. So literally, we knew one day before the public knew.
I think, I think it was Friday.
Yeah, Friday was the press link.
Is, is Barr gonna be here next Monday? So, cause they'll be the ones to get the heat. Hope not us.
I have not requested their presence yet, but I can definitely, uh, request that if that's what you prefer.
I think it'd be a good idea to have him here, cause there'd be a lot of answered questions.
We'd like to request one free consultation.
I'm sure the public will have a lot of questions for him.
Hydrology.
Uh, for Barr to be here? No, we didn't ask for Barr. We were just gonna give an update of the timeline. So.
Oh, okay. I might've had that wrong.
I could be able to answer those questions of what the public is asking for.
No.
No. Hey, you got anything else? Any more presentation?
I don't have any more presentation. This is just really time if you guys would like to have discussion. If you wanna take, I know it's a lot of information, so in the past you've taken time to go through the information and then schedule a time to start talking about changes or schedule time for subsidies. I did show on my original sheet, these are the dates that we had kinda tentatively, or at least in our calendars had set aside. Um, like I said, it's kinda unique because we do have two more meetings in September that won't be council meetings that you could potentially use both of those. Um, we do have to have everything finalized by October twentieth because we have to prepare all of the hearing documents. The actual budget hearings are scheduled for November. We have first reading at the first meeting, second meeting and a, second reading and adoption at the second meeting. So it's really where council wants to go from here. We'll need direction from you. What you would like to see at your next meetings and when you'd like to meet.
Um, could you do me a favor and go through the, um, increase in sales tax revenues and what you said at the very beginning?
Yep.
About, um, that money.
Yep.
Being available.
I can't imagine why with all of that information that didn't.
I, I, it was the first thing I wrote down.
Can I ask a real quick question first before we move on to that, then, then go to Stephanie or go to Susan's? Um, on that, on that schedule, I don't know, Kevin, if, I think maybe we'll, we would want to select one of those dates for subsidies so they know which night to show up. Uh, if they, you know, if they wanna come, if we.
Do we wanna meet next, before our meeting next week for an hour?
Well, we got an hour. I don't know why we wouldn't. I don't know what you guys think.
Usually, not that each year's different, but I think.
We have not used. Yeah, three meetings typically.
Yeah.
What, I by no means think that you need to schedule all these meetings just for fun, but I wanted to have dates set aside.
Well, I think we go till we finish. We just go right down there and then if we're done the twenty-ninth, we're done the twenty-ninth or done the twenty-second. So be it. But I think the meetings that you've got up there, if you guys are okay with, with those dates, let's just continue to meet the Mondays until we get it done.
Okay.
Think we can get the subsidy done in an hour? I think we can, don't you?
That's not a bad idea.
Then we'll have them out of the way.
Yeah, are you?
On Monday?
Just to clarify, are you asking me to invite them here so they can present or be here so they can answer any questions that you might have?
I don't think presentation, we've got the applications and if, if we've got questions, we can ask them. I don't know, Kevin, you're in charge of this. That's, that's my thought anyway.
That'd be a good one to get it checked out, you know, the box checked out to get it done, I think. Then we could, on the twenty-second, we could have a couple hours to go through a lot of the other stuff and.
My only concern, Kevin, is if we invite them to come and not allow them to talk, only answer our questions, we're not gonna get it done un- unless we don't allow them to talk, uh, in an hour.
I think, isn't that what we've done in the past is just kind of if we have specific questions, we've asked them.
Yeah, if we have quite, someone we want to have questions, then we'll just, you know.
So the direction you've given me in the past is to ask them to be present in case the council has questions as you review the applications.
Yeah. Let's do them on the twenty-second in case it, in case we get started on our meeting and all of a sudden the hour comes up and we got three left and then there's, then we state that they're done. And that gives us two, that gives you them two weeks. That makes sense. I'm fine. That's, that's what, that's what everybody wants to do. I'm, I have no problem.
Okay.
So we, but we can start on the budget. Are, are you guys okay with next for, uh, next Monday, starting at five and getting as much done as we can? Since we're gonna be here at six anyway. Marty, you gotta, you're traveling.
Do our best.
Okay.
Okay. So when I.
Well, we're usually walking in together, so I figured we keep consistent, so.
So what I'm hearing is September fifteenth will be just general council discussion, um, budget proposals until the council meeting starts at six. And then on the twenty-second, I should ask subsidies to be present for that work session.
And maybe, Kevin, you can look at it to see, you know, so we're kinda prepared. Do you wanna, you know, hit the capital expenditures? You know, start that night or you, you.
Might as well go down the list.
You can just let us know what you think you'd like to do first.
We should just go right down the list and get them done.
Okay. Okay, to answer Susan.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go back and answer Susan's question. So, um, twenty-twenty-five, we are four point one percent above twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-four collections were fifteen point three million dollars. In twenty-five, we have thirteen point four budgeted, which is telling me you will likely have at least one point nine million dollars above sales tax budget in twenty-twenty-five. Council could choose to take those funds and earmark it and add it to that future capital projects fund that we're using for the second station and the ice arena roof. Or, um, something this year. I guess it's probably more add to next year for something else that you wanna accomplish in the budget.
Could it go just into the general fund then? That's.
It is in the general fund.
It is in the general fund. And so we either earmark it for something else or we can use it for.
So I would probably, at this point, um, we're at, I believe, thirty-nine percent reserves. Um, where that one point nine would put you would be above what our target is for your policy. So either way, I'm gonna ask you to designate that um, for future capital projects, just so that we're not, so it's, has a purpose sitting in general fund. Yeah, roundabout, yeah. It could be for the roundabout in twenty-six. Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but part of our capital outlay in twenty-five was to keep the debt service for the lake project in mind. And so could we, we could still earmark some of those funds to that project as well.
You could, whatever council's choice is for that. Um, but you're exactly right. We didn't include the revenue, cause we knew that we were gonna have that one point two million dollar debt service payment coming on. So we have not wanted to incorporate that and have it get absorbed into operations and now have to make cuts. So yes, that'll be your guys' call, whatever you choose. Um, just for anyone who's watching, um, the PowerPoint that I went through today is in a narrative document. I'm gonna upload that tonight. The first page has a table of contents that you can click on to link to the various parts of the report if you're interested in looking at them in more detail. Read away, right, Marty? Yeah. Yeah. Other questions or things you need me to do?
Uh, yeah, I wanna have you do something. I wanna, I've asked this from the mayor and he hasn't done it, but I'm just, I want a list of city-owned property and what our rental agreements are and when they will expire.
Oh, I think.
We do have some of that.
I think we're working on that.
Yeah.
Perfect. I mentioned it one day. I don't know if we're actually working on it.
You sent me, we have from Park and Rec and.
We do renew the leases every three years. I did get that answer, but I, they're, I think they're compiling a list of everything, but they do have it. Yes. I completely forgot about it until you said it.
It's sitting on my desktop, so. We will get that for you. Other things that you would like me to bring or have prepared for next week?
You guys have done a phenomenal job again. It's just amazing how you guys work together and get this thing put together. Uh, the, this is hours and hours that you put into this, so we don't have to spend hours and hours. It's very much appreciated.
Yeah, I'll just say before, so we actually kinda work on the budget all year, it seems like. When we're bouncing from office to office, I'm just like, make, add that to the budget, add that to the budget. We were twenty-four million dollars over when we started, so, uh, Stephanie did most of the work getting it balanced, cause she listens to me. Yeah, jabber all day every day, so she knows what I'm going after. Right, yeah, but she's very good at listening. Uh, so I just wanna say a few things. So this is basically just a balance of citizen requests, the, what our staff needs and then your guys' direction. So it's trying to get, be a good balance. And my themes, as you'll probably see, is giving water to where it needs to go. So there's a lot of drainage stuff and fixing the roof and, you know, water projects like that and then activities and long-term fixes, so. After going through a couple floods, you wanna get water where it needs to go, so.
I do have to share, when the mayor and I first started looking through the budget and we're gonna go through cuts and he's like, you, you got this. I was gonna do this. I said, well, you told me to do it and I followed through with it.
I was like, how'd you know all this stuff already?
Cause you told me.
Anything else? We'll be adjourned.